Councillor Gorley, here.
Councillor Richards.
Here.
Councillor Sanchez.
Here.
Mayor Mahler.
Present.
President Protim Gerson.
Present.
Councillor Trask.
Present.
Councillor Coleman.
Present.
We have all seven present with no absent. Can you go ahead and read the video streaming rules for me, please?
Thank you to everyone who is joining us this evening. For members of the public who would like to take part in tonight's meeting virtually, we have some instructions to help you in case you are new to using Microsoft Teams. To take part, you will need to locate the chat bubble icon to participate in the meeting online. The chat bubble icon indicated with the yellow arrow on your screen now may be in the upper right hand corner of your screen, or you may need to click on the three dots to see an extended drop down menu. If you wish to be recognized by the mayor to speak during the meeting, please choose the bubble icon to enter into the meeting chat. It will appear on the right hand side of your screen. In the chat, enter your name, address, and phone number, followed by the topic you wish to discuss with the council. If you have signed in, you may be called on to speak at any point during the meeting, but probably during the agenda item you have entered to speak about. You can choose the hand icon also located in the upper right hand corner to indicate your desire to speak. It's the equivalent of raising your hand. The mayor, acting chairperson, or moderator will ask you to speak at the appropriate time. We'll give everyone who may wish to speak tonight a few minutes right now to enter their name, address, phone number, and topic they'd like to address with the council. In the interest of time, speakers should not repeat the points of previous speakers. Instead, state you agree with their point or disagree with their point. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes. Any extension of that time is at the sole discretion of the mayor or meeting chairperson, per the council rules. Those joining us by phone will be noted by the moderator for the mayor chairperson and called to speak at the appropriate time. The fact the meeting is online does not excuse poor behavior, and the mayor does retain the right to have people removed from the meeting as stated in the council rules.
At this time, consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. I roll call, please.
Councillor Gorley.
I will abstain as I was not in the meeting for the minutes.
Councillor Richards. Councillor Sanchez.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Councillor Gerson.
I also abstain because I was busy for the meeting.
Councillor Trask.
Yes.
And Councillor Coleman.
Yes.
Let's record show you have five eyes, no names, with two abstains. At this time, recognition of visitors hearing petitions. Anybody like to come forth before council will be heard. Evening, Mr. Adams. Name and address for the record, please.
Vince Adams, eight oh nine Mountain View Road here in Sweet Home, nine seven three eight six. So it's been several months since the discussion on speeding here in town, especially up on Mountain View. I do thank the folks that sent Sean out to do the survey. I don't know why we needed to do a survey. We just need to write tickets, but evidently we wanted to do a survey. So we did the survey, justified what I had spoke to, and verified it. A little bit later on down the road, they put a little reader board up down there. It worked for a while. I know for a fact it's not working now. So that didn't go anywhere, and it didn't really... It was more of a challenge, I think. People wanted to see how fast they could get that thing going, or how fast they could run the numbers up. So what I'm asking the city council here now, and whoever is in charge of the law enforcement, to do something about the speeding on Mountain View. It's ridiculous, and the numbers showed that in the survey. Something needs to be done before somebody has an accident, somebody gets hit. Right now, school's not in session, but we... I know for a fact that even when school is in session, it's still an issue. I don't know where you guys write speeding tickets. I see people pulled over on rare occasions when I am in town, out on the main drag, and that's the main concentration. I don't go and research and ask you guys for your stats and all that, so I don't know what the stats are. But I know nothing's being done up on Mountain View, and we'll throw Elm Street and Long Street in with that. Something needs to be done, and the city council needs to take charge and get it done before somebody gets hurt. Thank you for your time.
Chief, would you like to sign in on that one?
No, Mr. Adams, right. That's probably one of our worst areas in the... in Sweet Home as far as traffic associated with speeding on that. And so the reader board that he speaks of, it is down right now. Battery's been ordered by Public Works to replace the battery on it. And bottom line, I'm not going to disagree with anything it says. We'll focus more on that area and try to make a difference. Yeah, and that's true, but that's, you know, can't control that as well.
When I was going through town, I was in the fast lane, and you know the speed limit's twenty-five through there. We had that one by subway, and a fully loaded truck heading for Prime Murphy's, is my guess, looking at what he had on his truck. And I read the board, and it said forty-eight, and he went by him. That is just unbelievable.
Absolutely.
That's a truck. I mean, if anybody's walking across the street, they're toast. So I know you're doing a great job. Police Department's a great job, but I have to agree. We... It's all possible. We can enforce speed. The rest of the council feels regarding to that. That's just my opinion.
Understandable, and Captain Ogden, will I'll do a better job?
Have we priced one of the reader boards that actually takes pictures so we can issue tickets?
In order for that to actually happen, only specific cities within the state of Oregon are allowed to do that. Most of them are regarding running stop signs. I'm not even sure if there's a program to where speeders can be captured and cited for it. The traffic cameras that are in place that are doing that, they're specified in statute and for those running red lights. I can check into it, but I don't believe that's even an option.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, quite a while ago, I did talk to the chief about if I was speeding down forty-five miles an hour in the twenty-five mile an hour zone, I deserved to get a ticket. Just that simple. However, I want to know if you write tickets on all of those stops, and if not, why? And then if we do do that, do they go to the judge, Robert?
Yeah.
Okay, so is... So does the judge then cut that down sometimes, or all the time, or never?
They've got a presumptive fine that you go to on those, and depending on whether the person has had a record or not, or what the deal was, what the circumstances were, it could vary from there.
Well, I guess I just don't understand why if you've got to put a violation of speeding, why in the world would all that other stuff make it fly and flip? It makes no sense to me. I think they should... If I'm telling you, if I get cited for speeding, I'm going to pay the fine. I'm not going to go down there and fight it or any of that stuff. So I don't think they should be cutting it down. I think they should be taking the full amount of money for it, and I know we don't get a lot of it.
I'm not saying that. I'm not saying they don't. I'm just saying there's a presumptive fine by state law.
Okay, I'm okay with that, but we need to go by it, in my opinion.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, so we have on the agenda the Safe Route to School grant application, which should make a big difference on Mountain View if that... if we are able to get that grant, won't it?
Yeah.
At least during construction, they'll have to lower down a little bit.
Absolutely, and I don't want to steal Blair's thunder, but the hope would be that changing some of the design of that roadway would alter the speed, but that's to be seen.
Right. Okay, so we'll have to push for that grant.
Yeah.
I mean, I know that our police officers are doing a great job. Hopefully, we can do some enforcement.
Duly noted.
Any else who'd like to come forth and be heard before council? Onto old business, RCA, twenty twenty-three legislative priorities and cities.
Clearly, that's me up, is serving in a dual role right now. Basically, if council... Before you is a request for council action. Really, staff specifically, the city manager Protim is looking for input from the council on how to prioritize the twenty-two... twenty twenty-three legislative... the topics for the League of Oregon Cities. Last council session, I know information had been presented to the council and requested been made to respond with each of the councillors' priorities for the legislative session. And those four councillors have responded at this point in time, and the council also requested that staff get together, the management team get together, and also list their priorities. And so when that's been combined, in essence, the top five at this point in time, the top five legislative priorities, combined council input and staff input. First one is property tax reform. The second one is resilient, future-proof broadband infrastructure and planning investment. The third one is infrastructure financing and resilience. And a fourth one, local funding to address homelessness. And the fifth one, address measure one-ten shortcomings. So that's the input that has been received at this point in time. So really, we're kind of looking for council's direction on how to respond to the League of Oregon Cities. If those are the five priorities that you would like to see go forth to the city, if there's more input you would like to provide those councillors that didn't get a chance to submit. The challenge is that the responses need to be received by August 5th, so kind of the timeframe is shortening on this, but there's still some time for... to recalculate some of the priorities. We need a... would like for council direction on that, whether it's to move to approve the... make a motion on one of the options provided. Those options could be to direct the city manager Protim to compile the results of the council, to... Another option to direct the city manager Protim to coordinate with the city's executive team to develop and send the city's five topics, to direct the city manager Protim to send the following five lists of legislative issues, which are the ones that I had read to you. So really, city manager Protim, as before, but is looking for a direction on how council wants to respond to the priorities.
So moved to make the... or excuse me, to direct the city manager Protim or designate to send the following five legislative issues to the League of Oregon Cities as the City of Sweet Home's top five recommended legislative issues for the LOC to focus on in two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Motion second by roll call, please.
So, Mr. Mayor, do we get to discuss, or it's just a...
Yeah. Before we do the roll call, go ahead. I'll open it up for discussion.
So I believe if Julie can help remind me, there was an issue on there that had to do with economic development and making some sort of incentive to incentivize businesses. Is that one of the ones that you said was our top five priority?
It was not listed as one of the top five priorities. There is one titled as economic development incentives.
So I'm pretty disappointed that that is not in our top five when we're struggling with the downtown corridor and the small businesses in the local community. So I would like some more input from other councillors to maybe see if that's an important issue or not.
So we don't know what is going to happen at the legislature, and so the League of Oregon Cities will look at what the people bring forward, the different legislators, and they'll prioritize all the many issues that they bring forward in the bills. And I think Councillor Coleman can speak really well to this issue, and then they'll take those things. It doesn't mean that those fall off. We would just direct our... the energies and encourage them to direct their energies towards these things. So that kind of thing wouldn't fall away and go away forever. There would be a lot of things that would benefit cities across the state, and so they would be in that, too, I'm sure. Am I wrong on that, Susan?
No, you're not wrong.
So I'm aware of that, but what I'm disappointed about is the fact that that would not be one of our city council's main priorities, or even having some sort of consideration. And I personally don't want to be on the record as that's not one of our priorities. So if that's the way the rest of the council feels and the city staff, then maybe some other cities will make it a priority for the League of Oregon Cities, but I personally do not want to leave that one behind.
Councillor Sanchez, would you like to make an amendment to my motion?
I would just like to have some more input from the councillors who did not give any input before we come to a final decision. We still have a little bit of time. So if that's an amendment, so be it, but I'm not quite sure how that goes.
Any other counsel feedback regarding this?
Mr. Mayor, so I agree with you, Councillor Sanchez, because I also felt that economic development incentives were an important thing. So I, too, am a little disappointed that it's not on the list.
Would council, would you like a recap of the five that are on the list at this point in time?
Yes, please.
Okay, the first is property tax reform. Second is resilient, future-proof broadband infrastructure and planning investment. Third is infrastructure financing and resiliency. Fourth is local funding to address homelessness, and fifth is address measure one-ten shortcomings.
So I would like to amend my motion to include... How would you like to say that, Councillor Sanchez?
Well, we can only choose five, so I don't know if we're going to scrap one for the other, or we're going to have more input and see if it's a valuable choice for the rest of the councillors, or what.
So I will withdraw my motion at this time.
Actually, some is real... I mean, some that's kind of interesting in this, I was under the impression that the council's majority, original way it was discussed, maybe I misunderstood. One of my top ones looks like an office problem, too. So we had four councillors, and we turned it in. I'm listening through you right now. We had one of our tops, three of the four. So it almost looked like the city staff.
Oh, I can... The city staff's recommendations were local funding to address homelessness, property tax reform, resilient, future-proof broadband infrastructure and planning investment, road user fee, vehicle miles traveled structure, and funding for recovery of abandoned recreational vehicles.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Mr. Mayor, if we're going to postpone this for a while, we've got to have it in by August 5th. And I have another question. So is this all the cities across Oregon are getting these things and are putting those out? Well, that's a good thing. That's a good thing. I don't have a problem with... But we're going to make sure we get it in there fairly quick, so.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Hmm.
The concern is the downtown investment and development, right? So because homelessness is such a huge issue across the state, I'm going to assume that we're pretty safe that it's going to be a priority for them, right? So we could pull that one off and put on investment in downtown. Okay? Does that sound reasonable to everybody? Yeah, I think that's a way to get where we want to be. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
So one thing I just wanted to clarify, the programs that it's talking about in this, and I... to start off, I am in favor of lobbying on these because I think they're very important, but there are a number of very important things, and so I believe it got narrowed out of the list because of the importance of other things. However, the programs that it's talking about in this item are the Enterprise Zone and the Strategic Investment Program. Those are useful, very useful incentive programs, but they do not benefit downtowns. The only way they benefit downtowns is if you land a really big industrial user that brings more employees into the city or something like that. They're not... they're not any programs. They don't work for commercial or smaller scale industrial operations that could be in a downtown area.
Thanks, Blair. Okay, so we have another motion regarding the table on this.
Is everybody so comfortable with the motion as it has evolved? Okay.
Did you restate which one you wanted to remove?
The only priority that would be changed from the original motion would be the homeless one, and insert downtown development, economic development. Is that... is that correct?
My second will still stand on that amended motion.
Motion second on amended motion. I roll call, please.
Councillor Gorley?
Yes.
President Protim Gerson?
Yes.
Councillor Trask?
Yes.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes.
Councillor Coleman?
Yes.
Councillor Sanchez?
Yes.
Councillor Richards?
Yes.
Amendment of RCA twenty twenty-three priorities. Next up is RCA, consideration of measure one oh nine, potential ballot measure and ordinance.
If it's okay with you, Mr. Mayor, Community Economic Development Director Blair Larson's on, and will speak towards this topic.
Hello, everyone. I hope I'm being heard. So at the last meeting... Am I being heard, by the way?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, I'm quiet?
Yeah.
I'll try to speak loudly. At the last meeting, we talked about psilocybin and measure one... let's see, measure one oh nine, which essentially provides for psilocybin manufacturer and treatment facilities. That state law, that was passed in twenty twenty, I believe, yes, November twenty twenty, and it gives... the way the rules have been written, the city has the option of banning or having a moratorium on psilocybin facilities. However, such an action must be approved by voters in the November general election of this year. And so the direction from council at the last meeting was to pursue an outright ban, given the number of voters in Sweet Home who voted against the measure. Before you... are the materials necessary to move on with that process? Essentially, we have a resolution that needs to be adopted that outlines the ballot title and everything that goes with it that would go out to the voters. And then there's also an ordinance in your packet that would put in place the ban on psilocybin facilities, and that ordinance is contingent upon the ballot title, that measure passing in our jurisdiction. And so those items are all before you in the packet. I can answer any questions that you have, but just so you know the timeline here, we would need to do all this in time to submit everything to the county elections officer on September eighth. And so that gives us tonight's meeting and two more meetings. If you... if everything meets your approval, you can pass the resolution tonight, and if the votes are unanimous, there can be two readings of the ordinance, which would allow us to be done at the next meeting. If there's anything you want changed, we can make that change and have it ready for the next meeting and still make the deadline as long as the... at that next meeting, any changes to the ordinance were voted on unanimously, and there were two readings held at the next meeting. So I'm happy to take any questions. I hope that's clear. It can be a convoluted process.
For council questions?
Mr. Mayor, I was wondering if we should include within any of these statements whether the explanatory statement or the ordinance itself, comments to the vote that was taken in twenty twenty by the community of Sweet Home, whether we should put that percentage in there that the city of Sweet Home as a whole voted against this measure?
Don't know why we can't, but I mean, attorney may want to back on on that one. Well, you don't want it in your... I'll look at... I'll talk with Blair about it, but I do know that the ballot measure and that sort of thing, they're written as a neutral type of deal. So we'd have to look at that if it went from there to in a document, you know, even in your explanatory, we'd have to look at and see if it matches up with being neutral, the ballot measure is supposed to be that way. So we'd have to think about that.
So I wouldn't even know what one of these things were if I stepped on it. So my question is, Chief, have we had an increased problem with this particular drug use?
No, we have not. I've only investigated it once in my twenty twenty-three years.
Okay. And so I'm looking at the possible benefits to this, and I don't know. I don't believe I personally have enough knowledge about this to have this discussion. So that's just what I wanted to say. Thank you.
For counsel. Someone for banning, yeah.
So, Mr. Mayor, I do have a question. So in what Councillor Gorley was asking, if we... if the ban... the ban is on selling and producing, is that correct, the way it writes? It doesn't ban the use of it if somebody is using it, is that correct? I mean, we can't do that with personal use, right? Okay, thank you.
The ban is on treatment centers. Under the state law, the psilocybin use can only be done within a treatment center under the supervision of whoever is... has gone through the process to be able to run those centers. And so there is no home use or personal use associated with this. To my... that's my understanding. Chief, do you concur?
I agree. It's basically for the sale, however you want to call it, and/or production of psilocybin in Sweet Home.
Mr. Mayor, so I want to make it clear so they can grow them in their home and use them. I... that's a...
I don't believe the actually production of psilocybin in your home would be legal, even under Oregon.
Okay.
I think they pick it out of the fields out here in the valley. I think that's what my understanding is.
I thought you didn't know anything about this stuff.
Well, I'm not recognizing and knowing that people gather things like this. I mean, I know how to peel moss, too, so.
I agree with you. They're... they do pick them. I know that.
So, Mr. Mayor, may I ask one more question? So Blair, I'd like to ask a question. So it's... so this is not prescribed necessarily by an M.D. or a psychiatrist? It's sold as a... with special centers, as we were saying?
So... So psilocybin is, is banned at the federal level. And so you're not going to find any accredited M.D.s who would be involved in this type of facility. The, the measure that allows, that allows it under state law is focused on, on manufacturing, which it's not exactly the mushrooms that are gathered. It's a, it's a compound that is derived from those, that would be, that you would, that the, the law would allow them to manufacture that. But the use of it can only happen within these treatment centers that are approved by the state of Oregon. And to my knowledge, there aren't any medical doctors that are associated with that, unless they, unless they decided to go full on into that field and, and not maintain accreditation that would be in other states, I suppose. I, I don't know exactly what the regulations are on doctors being involved, but these, this is not through the medical system. This is a separate treatment center that is strictly operating under state law.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just want to say that this is going to the vote of the people of our community, and they get to be the ones to decide what we should or should not do in regards to this, correct?
Yes, any action you take tonight would only be meaningful with a, at least 50, 50.1% of the vote in Sweet Home.
I, I'm okay with that.
Mr. Mayor, I have a, one more question for Robert. So if we read this thing tonight, is that what we're planning on doing? Okay, and we're going to do it twice? Is that what I heard? Okay, never mind. Okay, so we're going to read this. So now, if you find out, Robert, that we can put that in there, are we going to have to go through a big, long process or just be able to adjust that? What we're doing is, is reading the, to answer your question, what you're doing is reading the resolution tonight, passing the resolution tonight to make the process further. And if the ordinance though gets read either tonight, twice or once, it gets read twice if everybody agrees that they want to, have to unanimously agree that they want to read it the second time by title only. Well, what I'm talking about is. And then we can amend, if they want to put it in the ordinance, we can amend the ordinance before this, in the third reading. Okay. Okay. The resolution will be passed, but.
Okay. So, but you were asking about passing the, about amending the resolution, not the ordinance, correct, Council Trask?
I just, I'm, I want to know if we want to put that, the Counselor Coleman wants to put in there, is that going to goof things up in the end?
So what you could do is, you could direct staff to, to look into the resolution being different and have that brought back to you at the next meeting, and you could still hold the first reading of the ordinance. Because the ordinance doesn't require, the, the ordinance is not dependent on the resolution. The ordinance is dependent on the vote of the populace.
Okay, thank you.
So there's, I'm, I'm just curious. So if in five years, they discern that this is good for PTSD, and our retirement facility decides that they would like to use this to help our veterans or whatever with PTSD, this ordinance would prevent them from being able to use this, even if it becomes a legal drug for that?
It would prevent them from acquiring it here in Sweet Home.
Yeah, so they couldn't, a facility like out here by the lake, they couldn't, they still couldn't use it out there for their patients, right?
I don't know that 100%. I'm not sure.
This, this ban.
Without going back to ballot, right?
Can you repeat that?
Without going back to the ballot to reverse this for a legitimate facility that is like a hospice or retirement facility or something like that.
Correct.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, the county is going to put this on their ballot, too, and then that would regulate the community outside of the city of Sweet Home. So depending on what the county votes for, would be what we could do outside of Sweet Home.
And to, also what Blair said, you could also do the ordinance, I mean, do the resolution, you could have an amended resolution, because a resolution, you can pass it the same night that you're doing it. So if it needs to be amended, you could always amend it also. Or just come up with a different resolution and repeal the other one that carry on.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I think part of the confusion comes because OHA has not finished their rulemaking process, process regarding how this is all going to play within the state of Oregon. And so I think there's some confusion that comes because the state hasn't even figured out what they're doing yet, so.
Any future discussion? Council directive.
So, Mr. Mayor, are we putting a hold on the resolution? Is that what, is that what we're doing? I mean, if, if we were talking about amending it.
We can amend it later.
Amend it later, okay. So, 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 Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to go with option two and adopt resolution number 29 for 2022 and conduct first and second reading of the ordinance bill number four for 2022.
I'll second that.
Second by roll call, please.
Council Trask?
Yes.
Council Gorley?
Pass the coin. No.
Council Coleman?
Yes.
Council Sanchez?
Yes.
Council Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes.
Council Gerson?
Yes.
Six eyes, one nay. RCA, consider measure 109, potential ballot measure. That said, do we still have to make a motion to move on from reading?
Are you, are you doing your, are you doing your ordinance now? Or are you going to wait till you get over here on ordinance bill? What?
That, that's later in the agenda, correct?
Correct. That's, that's what I'm saying. Just wait till you get over here to ordinance bill.
Okay, just.
Yeah.
Hey, moving on, information only, FAC facility update.
Again, we'll either turn this over to both Public Works Director Springman and/or Blair.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm caught flat footed on this. I didn't manage to prepare a memo on this before I left.
That's quite all right, Blair, that's all right. Greg was going to take some of this.
Is Greg there?
Yes.
Okay, he's probably better for me, or than, than me.
They set up modulars that they, they basically jack them up, they bring this long trailer and put it underneath and set it back down to the couch on trailer itself. We did locate the company that set that up, where, or at least discussed with them, for cost, but they will move that, and I believe those details are being worked out. I also believe that FAC is working with our local provider that they can.
So they will be able to take that apart for them and then have that company, the modular company, come and relocate on the property. They have actually also set two restrooms on the property that haven't been hooked up to water or sewer yet. We do have the water line, we have electrical system all put in, waiting for PAC Power to run their power. We will have, once they set that trailer, we'll be able to run the water and sewer. Probably won't take much longer. Way I understand also is that fence posts will probably start going up within a couple of weeks. So everybody's moving forward. The vinyl plastics arrived last week, we were storing them at Public Works. So it's moving along, and hopefully, before too long, we'll get there. But still more to come. Blair, anything else?
Uh, no, I've been out of commission, but I, the, I know I sent the, the estimate for moving the building onto Brock, and I don't know what course of action they were going to take if he had already gotten that scheduled or not, but you, you may have more current information than I do.
Any questions to councilors? Thanks for the update. Information only, Ninth Avenue Waterline Replacement Project update.
Okay, well, just keep going. We brought this project to you, I want to say in June. We want, wanted to award it, we, we put it out to bid, we got, we got some responses back. But we learned that Buy America could come into play with this project, which could make the project a little bit more expensive. We reached out to League of Cities, our city manager, Pro Tim. We also have reached out to Treasury Office, and I believe there was a seminar Friday, which I attended, that discussed the Buy America program. And what they said was that Buy America applies to any federal funding or grants for projects after May 2022. They also said that ARPA funds were going to be exempt, but there were some exceptions, and that they would be addressing those in a memorandum of support. All indicators are leaning towards that it doesn't apply. And I think we're hearing that from multiple sources, but they haven't released that final statement yet, and so we're waiting on that. As soon as we hear on that, we're going to bring that project back and get it awarded. I'm hoping sooner and later. It would be nice to find out next week, the following week, and we could bring it back to the following council meeting. But soon. So that's, that's my update. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions, council? Anything, Greg?
Thank you.
Now, new business, RCA, engineer record, water master plan to task order amendment.
Uh, Mr. Springman, is this one you're going to have Trish respond to?
Trish is online, and she will, she's been working on this master plan project and can provide the update for this.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yep. Here, Trish.
All right. We are requesting authorization tonight to execute an amendment for an additional $10,000 for modeling the forecasted projections for population growth in our water system. The original task order, I believe the way that the population growth would be forecasted was kind of the traditional, pick an inflation number and apply it with a compound interest formula. But as we've progressed through the project with West Yost, they brought up a very good point that in order to make an accurate model to predict future city needs, it would be helpful to target the growth to where it's actually going to happen, instead of just applying a formula across the entire city. So we looked at some maps with them, we pinpointed areas of town where developers have been applying for apartments, subdivisions, discussing future growth with the city. And so that would take a little bit of extra design work to update those specific sections of the model. And so that is the reason for the request for an additional $10,000. Are there any questions?
Questions in council?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Trish, is there anything that they can cut back on before we ask for additional money?
Hmm. I have not looked through the whole entirety of the project to identify things to cut. Maybe that is something Greg can speak to?
It would be something that we would have to talk with them. So if we, if we then reallocate budget funds to do this, we would, then something else in this would suffer. So it's additional work that needs to be done. And so we can research that, but something would suffer, and I don't know what that is at this time.
I wasn't expecting anything to suffer or be less than. I was just wondering if they had any ideas in their head about what they could maybe do a little bit less work on so they could include this in the original amount.
Yeah, we haven't had that discussion with them, to be honest. I, I mean, if, if that's the council direction, we can be more than happy to have that discussion with, with Preston and the team. We could relook at this and maybe come back with some options as, as a, as an effort.
I know for me, at least when I do things like that, I try to negotiate a little bit to see if we can get a little bit better deal on some other things when there's a little bit of an overrun and still get the work done that needs to be done. So I was just wondering if that's something that can be done with this.
If you want us to maybe table this for two weeks, we can then ask, and we can bring that information back. Again, I, I don't know what that could be, but we can most certainly do that.
That we're looking at doing something that would, in case of population growth? I think that often when we do a project, we do for what is existing instead of what will be. So I think that's what this project is looking at, if our population goes up. It appears as though we have the funding for this. I, too, have questioned it, but I can see the need for looking at things for the future instead of just sticking with what is. So I, I understand that.
Any other feedback to council?
I too appreciate the fact that they're looking forward at new development, and very happy to see new development happening in our community, because that will absolutely affect the downtown in the future. And so, although I don't like spending $10,000 more on this, but I think it's a reasonable request.
I have to agree. I think looking into the future and being proactive is the only way to go. Because in our past, in the city, we, we weren't proactive, and this caught us, so I agree with. Go ahead.
Yeah, your water master plan, your sewer master plan, or your sewer facilities plans, these are documents that you design and that you need to take in consideration of all information, your future growth, all these things. Because that document's not just going to sit on a shelf for 20, 30 years. People are going to pull that off periodically, and we're going to ask developers to build the things that are in this document. And we've set SDCs to do that. And so this will be our bible moving forward as development grows in certain areas of our, in what we call our basins. And so it's extremely important for the growth of Sweet Home for years to come, long after the staff is possibly gone. So just know, this is an important document for the future of, for water and sewer, or water specifically in this one.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I, I, I don't like holding back and, and not getting it done as soon as possible. And, and I don't like giving them extra money, too, but I think we should move this forward. And then you can still ask if, if, if they can do something. I, I'm probably not going to, but I, it would be nice to be able to ask them and say, hey, you know what, we, we, we need to figure this out if we can do a better, a better price. Whether they can or not, we, we don't know.
So I could be more than happy, I can reach out to them, we can have that discussion, and I can bring back information related to this.
My, my point is, I'd like to move this forward now, and not put it off for another two weeks or another month, or however long it's going to take. So I'm about as conservative as you're going to find, but I, I don't want to spend a bunch of money, we don't need to, just like everybody else.
Agreed.
But I, I'd like to move this forward. I agree with Council Trask, we delay, meaning that costs us more delays. I'm leaving, looking at wastewater treatment, that alone, how that's skyrocketing, so.
Okay, any other feedback or any questions of council, if not, any council directive?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to say, I too appreciate the detail to figuring out exactly where we need the growth. I know that the wastewater treatment facility sometimes was delayed in getting things taken care of, and that's why we have a mess we have now. So I appreciate the, the fine tooth comb over this plan so we can plan accordingly.
So I appreciate the, the fine tooth comb over this plan so we can plan accordingly.
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize staff to execute Task Order 10, Admin, Amendment One. Second half. Motion second by roll call, please.
Counselor Gorley, yes. Counselor Coleman, yes. Counselor Sanchez, no. Counselor Richards, no. Mayor Mahler, yes. Counselor Gerson, yes. Counselor Trask, yes.
Show five eyes in two days. Junior Record Matt, Water Master Plan. Next up, Safe Routes to School Grant Application.
Good, Mr. Mayor. We'll turn this over to Blair Larson.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
All right. So if you're not aware, the Oregon Department of Transportation has a competitive construction grant program that funds pedestrian improvements with the goal of improving safety for, for students walking and biking to school. It's the Safe Routes to School Program. For the past year, the city staff have worked with Sweet Home School District and other community partners to develop a safe routes to school plan, and that is in your packet. And then from that plan, develop a project that would specifically for this grant program. The project that was identified with these partners focuses on Mountain View Road to the north and south of Sweet Home Junior High School, and includes improvements to Mountain View Road from Ames Creek Road to Juniper Street, the intersections in between, as well as the intersection of Ames Creek Road and Grape Court and Grape Loop. Those areas were found to be the most in need of safety improvements for students who walk and bike to school. The grant program has two tiers of support, one that requires a 40% local match and one that requires only a 20% match. Under the rules of the program, this pop project qualifies for a local match of only 20%, which makes it very attractive and a significant financial benefit to the community. The total project cost is estimated to be just over 2.1 million. The required 20% match from the city would amount to 436,560. And this project is expected to start in the next fiscal year, so it wouldn't impact the current budget. Staff recommend funding this project out of the PATH Fund and to a smaller extent, transportation and stormwater system development charges. In the current budget, the PATH Fund has 634,480 reserved for future expenses, and these funds could be utilized in the next fiscal year for this project. Donna Short, a local grant writer, has worked with both the city and the school district on this project, and she's really done most of the work in putting this application together. She had told me that she was going to come tonight, but I don't know if she is there. And so if she is, it may be good to hear from her.
Miss Short is here this evening, so if there is questions, she'll be more likely to answer them. Questions, council?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to commend Donna. That grant application is impressive. I think it looks great, and I hope that we get that.
Agree with that. Great job. Thank you. Any other questions, council? Okay, council directive.
So moved as recommended.
Second.
Motion second by roll call, please.
Counselor Richards, yes. Counselor Sanchez, yes. Counselor Coleman, yes. Counselor Gorley, yes. Counselor Trask, yes. Counselor Gerson, yes. Mayor Mahler, yes.
Show, we have seven eyes, no names, approval of the Safe Routes to School Grant Application.
Thank you.
Tell him, Miss Short.
This is actually the best. We, it's evolved, and that's only good thing. I think that we have a pretty good chance of.
Thank you. Next up, RCA Government Portfolio Advisors Contract Extension.
It's okay with you, Mr. Mayor? We'll have Finance Director Nish.
Before you is a request to approve an extended contract with Government Portfolio Advisors. The city signed on with them in, uh, looks like July of 2017 for an original three-year period. And for each subsequent year, the contract has been extended with GPA. They provide us with investment advice, review our portfolio, review potential transactions, provide us with advice on what purchases might be beneficial for the, for the, for the city's investment portfolio. I don't really have anything beyond that, except if the council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions, council? Council Directive?
Mr. Mayor, so moved as recommended.
Second.
Motion second by roll call, please.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman, yes. Counselor Gorley, yes. Counselor Trask, yes. Counselor Gerson, yes. Mayor Mahler, yes. Counselor Richards, yep.
Let the record show the seven eyes, no names, approval of the Government Portfolio Advisors Contract Extension. I'm moving on to ordinance bill. We have an ordinance bill number four for 2022. Need a motion in a second to move forward for first reading this evening. So moved.
Second.
Motion second by roll call, please. Yes.
Sorry. Counselor Gerson, yes. Counselor Trask, yes. Counselor Gorley, yes. Counselor Coleman, yes. Counselor Sanchez, yes. Counselor Richards, yes.
Show of seven eyes, no names, approval of ordinance bill number four for 2022 to be moved forward for reading this evening.
Ordinance Bill Number Four for 2022. Ordinance No. Sweet Home ordinance declaring a ban on psilocybin service centers and the manufacture of psilocybin products. Whereas, in November 2020, Oregon voters approved ballot measure 109, known as the Oregon Psilocybin Service Act, codified at OAS 475A, which allows for the manufacture, delivery, and administration of psilocybin at licensed facilities. And whereas, OAS 475A, 235 provides that the Oregon Health Authority will regulate the manufacturing, transportation, delivery, sale, and purchase of psilocybin products and the provision of psilocybin services in the state. And whereas, the Oregon Health Authority has initiated a rulemaking process to implement the state's psilocybin regulatory program and intends to begin accepting applications for psilocybin-related licenses on January 2nd, 2023. And whereas, as of July 26th, 2022, the Oregon Health Authority has not completed the rulemaking process for implementing the state's psilocybin regulatory program, and the city of Sweet Home is uncertain how the manufacturer, delivery, and administration of psilocybin at licensed psilocybin facilities will operate within the city. And whereas, OAS 475A, 718 provides that a city council may adopt an ordinance to be referred to the electors of the city prohibiting the establishment of state-licensed psilocybin product manufacturers and or psilocybin service centers in the area subject to the jurisdiction of the city. And whereas, the city council seeks to refer to the voters of Sweet Home the question of whether to establish a ban on state-licensed psilocybin product manufacturers and psilocybin service centers within the city's jurisdictional boundaries. Now therefore, the city of Sweet Home does ordain as follows. Section One, Prohibition. The establishment of psilocybin product manufacturers licensed under OAS 475A, 290, and psilocybin service centers licensed under OAS 475A, 305, is prohibited in the city of Sweet Home. Section Two, Referral. This ordinance is referred to the electors of the city of Sweet Home for approval at the next statewide general election on November 8th, 2022. Section Three, Effective Date. This ordinance takes effect and becomes operative 30 days after the day on which it is approved by a majority of voters, passed by the council, and approved by the mayor this day of 2022. Muratest, City Manager Pro Tem, Ex officio City Recorder.
Any questions, council? I need a directive if you want this, a motion to move to second reading this evening by title only. Still moved. Motion second by roll call, please. Yes.
Counselor Gerson, yes. Counselor Trask, yes. Counselor Gorley, yes. Counselor Coleman, yes. Counselor Sanchez, yes. Counselor Richards, yes.
Show of seven eyes, no names. For second reading this evening by title only.
P N I L C Y, P I N product.
That works for me. There's.
I can live with that, Robert.
Okay, any questions, council? I need a directive for a third and final reading motion. Still moved. Motion second by roll call, please.
Counselor Coleman, yes. Counselor Sanchez, yes. Counselor Richards, yes. Mayor Mahler, yes. Counselor Gerson, yes. Counselor Trask, yes. Counselor Gorley, yes.
Let the record show I have seven eyes, no names. Approval of moving this to a third and final reading on August 9th, by title only. Don't have any third readings. Moving on to reports of committees. Any report of committees?
So, Mr. Mayor, the Melody has left the Chamber of Commerce, or will, I think, on the first. They are working to cover the Chamber office with volunteers and some part-time paid, hopefully to beat the contract and their needs. They've also added a new member on the board. Wendy Melchior will be on the board. That's from a meeting last week.
Thanks, Diane. Any other committee reports?
The health fair is moving forward. They're going to be having it this year in front of the high school. And actually, I was wanting to talk to Councilor Gerson about maybe having the YAC there. They could actually table the event. And so if you know any other organizations that should be invited to participate, please reach out to them. Oh, you would ask that? Sorry, it fell out of my head, and I just talked to Bob recently. So maybe, thank you. You're awesome. So there, August 20th. Thank you so much. I'm sorry.
Very good. Any other committee reports? Mayor's report. Our Finance Director is leaving us. Sorry to hear that. Wish him the best of luck, and thank you for your service to our community.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that. It's, it's been a pleasure. I've enjoyed working here, and I will miss all of you, actually.
You know, tomorrow, I think two to four of them is, yeah, are going away. Please don't be a stranger, and thank you for everything. City Manager Report.
Well, this is going to be a two-pronged report tonight. I wanted to first thank the chief for filling in for me this evening. I didn't anticipate being able to be here, and so I thought when I got here, I'm just going to let him continue because he did such great work. Julie told me he got here at four o'clock to prepare. Just kidding, you chief, you did great. And I, I do appreciate you and your work here, and, and thank you for supporting me while I was out of town. The second thing I wanted to do tonight is to let you know that we have prepared a city candidate handbook. Julie Fisher puts this together every year. This year, Robert reviewed it as well and put a lot of time and effort into it, as well as Legia Mole. And so Julie Fisher, Legia Mole, and Robert Snyder, thank you so much for putting together this amazing city council candidate handbook. We'll be accepting applications beginning August 1st, and all of the details for running for a city council position are outlined in that handbook. And what an amazing resource that we have available in our community, thanks to these individuals who put this together. The next thing I'd like to do is thank Blair Larson, Chief Lynn, and our city attorney, Robert Snyder, for the work that they put in in preparing the ballot measure and supporting documents for consideration by the voters. It, it's a very detailed process, and they've been working together to ensure that the city complies with all of the requirements. And so I want to thank them for that. And I would be remiss if I did not also thank Brandon Nish for his service to the city of Sweet Home over the last, what is it, four and a half years? And on behalf of the city staff, I think there is no question that we will all miss you, Brandon, and wish you well in your new career. And again, thank you so much for your service here.
There's only a couple of other things that I wanted to mention. One is associated with the library. And Megan will be able to jump in on this as well. But the Museum of Natural and Cultural History's Oregon Dino Stories coming to Sweet Home, and it's going to be in the library from August 3rd to September 6th of this year. And the museum's outreach coordinator, which, who's a former Sweet Home resident, Mia Jackson, will be doing a presentation at 3:00 PM on August 3rd. And so the, the presentation, or the, the, it'll be here for over a month in the library. And so hopefully, Megan, would you like to chime in on anything else associated with that?
I just want to say if you love dinosaurs or have a favorite dinosaur, please come and visit.
And we'll see who can pronounce the dinosaurs, because we did so well with psilocybin. And then, Robert, you're hired for that. Then also, you know, as everybody's seen, the jamboree is in full setup mode starting Monday, and so throughout the week, there will be more. I wasn't going to say chaos, but there'll be some, some construction and some detouring going on as the week progresses. So we look forward to an exciting event coming up. And then also, from, from my standpoint, I'd like to thank Brandon for his input for the last four years, four and a half years, his smiles and his, his friendship. And so as from, from our executive team, we'll, we'll miss him. That's all I have on that.
Department Directors Reports. Our Department Directors?
Mayor, Brandon, I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So on page 206, check 94162 to the Albany tow. Are we towing abandoned vehicles? Is that what that is for?
I would have to pull that specific one up. I believe that that was likely for an RV that was towed, hence the high price tag for that.
Yes, it is. That's what I was asking.
Yeah, they're not cheap to tow because nobody really wants to, to take them because then they have to figure out how to dispose of them. And certainly, Chief might have some additional information, but my initial guess would be that that was what that one was related to.
Yes, and it is extremely painful to have to tow RVs that have been abandoned on the streets just simply because of the cost of it. As you can see there, they quote us anywhere from $2,000 to $5,000, depending on the, the RV. And that's simply because they can't get rid of them either. They either typically have to dismantle them in some form to get rid of them. And it's not just, it's not a topic just to Sweet Home. Every community is trying to find outlets for RVs that are either been abandoned or are towed within communities.
Are, are we having a huge problem with this, or is this just an isolated situation?
It's growing, and I, I've mentioned that, I think, a couple councils ago. We, there's probably anywhere from three to six at any point in time in Sweet Home that aren't just necessarily being abandoned, but individuals are living in them, and they're moving them from place to place. So there's kind of two different issues with that. Those that are abandoned, we, we, we definitely don't want to leave on the streets. So we, it costs us money to get rid of them, and, and that's what this one was.
Okay, thank you. I have one more question. So, Brandon, how are we doing with the audit?
All, to the best of my knowledge, all of the information for the 2021 audit has been turned into our auditors in Salem, Grove Mulroney, Swink. At this point, we did forward off an email to them to, to find out what a timeline might be for finalizing that. And as of the close of business today, I did not have a response from them yet.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question on the same. So how are we going to know who's going to take care of that when you're gone?
I, I imagine that there's an interim finance director in place, Matt Brown. If there's anything that I cannot wrap up before I go, and they have questions after, then, then he should be able to, to find that information out of our system. And certainly, the finance department staff can support him on that.
I was pretty sad it wasn't done in time.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I would like the council to know that I did reach out to the Secretary of State Audits Division today. And so we will be submitting some.
And so we will be submitting some additional documentation to them in light of the correspondence that the council received. And later this week, I will work with Brandon and our auditing team to, to reach out to the audits division to ensure that we meet the deadline for getting that 2021 audit submitted to them. And from what I understand, once our audit is complete, then the, the, the state revenues will flow through to the city just as we would expect that they would.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Brandon. Anything else for department directors? And anything the directors would like to bring up?
So, Mr. Mayor, my community is having national night out, August 2nd. I know Counselor Trask likes to show up. We are having barbecue.
I'll be there.
Six o'clock. And also there'll be a reception for the art show that's in the gallery on August 5th from 5:00 to 7:00. You can meet the artist and have a little refreshment.
Mr. Mayor, I had a couple of, I don't know, heads up to Megan. She did a great job. And that dinosaur exhibit that's coming, it's not costing the city anything because of her work. Other cities after us will have to pay $650 to have the exhibit there, but she was able to get it to us for free. So I want to say thank you to her. I also want to say thank you to chief for working with OSP to get their officers here for this weekend to help us with our safety. But, and finally, I want to say thank you to Brandon for all of his work. I know that when he started, we were limited in how much we had online or how much we had automated in a computer system. And he's worked hard at doing that. He's brought us ClearGov, but he also saved us, I don't know, $700,000 on interest on a loan and other efforts like that. I think he's done a great job. So I want to say thank you, Brandon.
Real quick, I would like to thank, thank our YAC member for being here. I know we're boring and very long-winded. I'm sorry about that. We keep working on it, but we don't get any better. But I really appreciate you being here.
That was on the record too. Thanks. Anything else? Council business good order, Comcast update?
Mayor, it is just there. The Comcast gives us some updates on their channeling changes and so we just include that so you have it.
There's nothing else?